Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Hingham School Committee, the meeting of September 9th, 2019. Our first school committee meeting of the official school opening. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If anyone else intends to audio or video record this meeting, please let me know. Seeing none, all right, thank you. Item two, 2.1, is to approve minutes of the school committee meeting held on August 12th, 2019.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of this-
Oh, sorry? Yes. Yep. No, that's okay. We'll do that, and then we'll take, no problem. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on August 12th, 2019.
All right. Second? Eliza? Any discussion? Yes.
Sorry, thank you. I think the time that we adjourned is different, is wrong. I think we adjourned around 9:40.
What does it say? Eight? Start looking to see.
Yeah, and the video, I went back to the YouTube video of it, and it was two hours and 40 minutes, and we started right at seven, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds right. It was longer than-
It was long.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I also have two things. Did you have anything else, Miss?
Just a spacing thing, but I can tell Kerry.
On item 8.4, just wanted to clarify, and I've sent this to Kerry. The Salary Negotiation Subcommittee weren't the ones that narrowed down the applicant pool of the attorneys, and I think I explained this. It was, it should read, "The Salary Negotiation Subcommittee voted a screening committee of Dr. Austin, Dr. LaBilwa, John Ferris, and Liza O'Reilly," who narrowed down the applicant pool to three firms. And then on 8.5, since you noted two of the things that I said, there was a third thing that I also said that I would like to have reflected in the minutes to read. She also asked if the Subcommittee had requested contributions from any booster groups to help fund the project. Carlos De Silva committed to following up with the booster groups.
Is that? Okay. All right. All right, is that it? Any other discussion on the minutes? All right, so a motion was made and seconded to approve, and we want to make amended to-
I think a motion to amend the minutes, as read.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Item three, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed. In addition, we have set up aside up to 15 minutes at the start of the meeting for items not on the agenda that folks may want to comment or discuss on. Discuss, sir? Anyone here this evening who wishes to bring any information? All right, I will not read the rest of this, then. Item number four, superintendent's report. Dr. Austin, you are on.
Thank you. We'll start quickly with just an update on the East Elementary flooding issue. I am happy to say that we have passed all of our inspections. We're ready to go to school tomorrow with all students, so kindergarten will actually be going tomorrow to East, and I want to thank everyone from our business office to our facilities management, to our custodial staff, and our teaching staff, who did a phenomenal job of getting that school ready and ready to go. And to thank you to Principal Tony Keating, thank you very much for the work you did in preparing that and communicating effectively with parents. I think it's as smoothly as it can go. It went, and we're ready to go to school tomorrow with all students, including kindergarten. As you might remember or recall, we started last week on time with the fourth grade, but had to take an extra few days for the kindergarten because the bottom floor was the floor that took more damage. But they've done a phenomenal job and really have prepared 95% of those classrooms. There's still some painting to do in places. They'll do that at night or on weekends or on vacations. I think we have a couple of smart boards to put up.
Yes.
Correct. John, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, just some cabinets. We have the, we have replacement cabinets coming, but those are 14 weeks out, so the old one is in there for now, but we'll be handling those when those new ones come in.
So that's good news with East. And the next thing I have is an opening of schools report, which is kind of traditional to me. I'm not sure you've done it, but I really wanted to. I asked our principals to come tonight and thank them for their time to come tonight, and just give you a brief few moments of some of the things they've been doing. As for the opening, I thought that would be helpful for the school committee to hear. And the only one I think that we don't have here tonight is Mr. Swanson. He's not here, and he did email me, so I'm going to pull it up so I can read those comments, if you don't mind. "To the high school, almost 1,300 students passed through the halls of Hingham High School last week. The high school opened the year with its largest enrollment in many years. Fortunately, those students and their teachers had access to the entire building since the long upstairs hallway known recently as the Fire Wing had been reopened in time for the start of school." I don't think we've officially renamed that. "A large freshman class was introduced to life at Hingham High School during a full day of ninth-grade orientation on Thursday, August 29th. Our newest high school students were welcomed by school administrators and other staff members at the opening assembly, had a chance to go through their schedules and meet with all their teachers, found their lockers," which is obviously one of the most difficult things for them, "met the advisors, interacted with older peer mentors, enjoyed our first-ever class barbecue, and signed up to clubs at the annual Clubs and Activities Fair before heading home. Each of the three classes held a full-class assembly last week during the first regular week of school. At those assemblies, students heard from their class advisors and class officers, as well as school administrators. The tone has been set for what we expect will be a fun, memorable, positive, productive school year. It promises to have many highlights, including freshman Parents Night tomorrow night, open house on September 26th, homecoming on October 12th, the Fall Concert on October 22nd, and the Fall Musical Mamma Mia in late November," just to name a few. "We're excited to be underway, and we look forward to moving our school ever closer to an amazing, its amazing potential." And I will say that I attended a good part of the freshman orientation day, and Mr. Swanson does a phenomenal job of welcoming students and making them feel ease as they start their journey, so congratulations to them. Now, I'll work towards, I didn't really think about this as I put in order, so I apologize for that, folks, but Hingham Middle School.
Good evening, and thanks for having us all. We all sit in the back, pretty much sharing the same feelings. It's been a very, very smooth beginning to the year. It's very nice to start with the students all feeling relaxed and ready after summer vacation. Hingham Middle School, welcome. Just over 1,000 students through our doors last week. If you've never been to the middle school on the first day of school, I highly recommend it, seeing 1,000 nervous kids walking through the door. You know, the sixth graders looking like they don't know which way is up, but by the end of that week, they all are confident and know exactly how to manage themselves in that building. I think a big advantage that we have is the very early start that the middle school has, starting at 7:30 in the morning. Many of our students didn't realize summer vacation was over until about lunchtime, so, you know, as they, as they get used to that schedule throughout the fall, we will see them come in ready to learn every single day. We had, I think, really a nice, smooth opening because of all the transition activities that took place last spring and over the summer, with our move-up day that's held in May, and our walk-arounds where students can come with their schedules and tour the buildings independently in late August, and the visits that Ms. G hosts with our students. Ms. Gustafson invites kids in over the summer, drop in with their parents, and she gives them the personal guided tour of the school. All those things help to reduce the anxiety of our newest students, our sixth graders, so we think that that really made a big difference in starting the year off on the right foot. We're excited about our kind of new teachers, right? We've stolen some teachers from other schools throughout the district. We have Ms. Manning, who is now one of our Spanish teachers who came from East. We stole Jen Gonzalez from Plymouth River for another Spanish teacher. Amanda Harding, we took from South. So we take something from all of our friends to make the middle school a little bit better. We're very excited to have them join our team, our new programs. We're really thrilled to have in place the Language Academic Home Base, which is shaping up to really meet needs of students that we are really looking forward to keeping them engaged in the greater life of the school without having too much instruction taking place outside of the general education classroom. And our inclusion facilitator is already getting into classrooms and helping teachers co-teach to a greater degree. So, you know, we're working on our plans for Start With Hello Week, which is coming up September 23rd through 27th, as are the other schools, but overall, it's just been a really nice start to the school year. We're very excited to get things going. So again, thanks for having us here this evening. All right.
East, Ellen entry.
Like I said, Dr. Austin kind of gave a quick update, but I will say, we were very fortunate to have a phenomenal response to our flooding problem. You know, on Sunday, when I got the phone call from Katie Hartman, I was up on the North Shore, but she told me everything was well underhand, so Service Master was on-site within hours, very quick cleanup. They were, did a great job in kind of being on top of everything that had to be done to prepare the school for the students. So I had a big push to get the fourth-grade classrooms ready. Those are the ones that we were kind of first concerned with because we wanted to make sure we got our fourth graders in. So teachers came in on Labor Day to finish preparing their classroom. We have a fair number of other staff who just volunteered their own time to come in and help the teachers get the classrooms ready, and same thing preparing for kindergarten. So kindergarten teachers were doing final prep today as they finished unpacking, putting everything back, so we are all ready to welcome our kindergarteners tomorrow. Great support from the parent community, the families, all willing to step up and offer to help us prepare the building to get ready. So once again, a truly team effort, and it was great. As for the rest of the building, we welcomed our students. Once again, that we have almost 30 new students, new families coming into East School. We have two new MEKO families that joined us this year, so we started, we invited all of our new families to a new student tour last week in August. We divided it into groups. I take half, our sister principal Becky Kasek's the other half, give them a full tour of the building, so when they come back, they have an understanding of where they're going. We do our open house right that week before school starts, the Thursday, open the building up. A little bit complicated this year because we still had contractors on-site who were still working to prepare the buildings, and they were, once again, very cooperative with us as we asked them nicely, like, "Well, I need to have students go down here," and they said, "No problem." They shifted their work so that they could allow the students to get to their classrooms, meet their teachers, meet their classmates before the first day of school. So all went great. We did welcome our preschoolers on Thursday. 61 preschoolers coming in this year, varying times, varying schedules. Very smooth start for our preschoolers. If you have a chance to come over and visit, I'm very proud of our preschool program. They do some phenomenal work. We have two new staff members this year. We actually stole a first-grade teacher from PRS, so Melissa's been very generous. We had an increase of enrollment, so we added a fourth first-grade section this year. Jackie Miss Callister came over, and she is off to a great start, part of a great team. And then we did have to replace the Spanish teacher that Derek stole, so we were lucky enough to find a phenomenal teacher, Christina Howrigi, hope I said it correctly. She was a long-term sub when she was here before at South School, and she has been part of the Milton Public Schools for the past three years. Came highly recommended with a lot of support. When I talked to her principal, very sad to see her go. So we were very lucky. Once again, we're off to a great start. Tomorrow, we will be a complete building. We welcome 81 of our kindergarteners in to get the school year off to the official start. So, that's it. Thank you.
Friends at Foster.
We at Foster also had a very smooth start. We had our open house and welcome-back party sponsored by our PTO prior to the start of school. We had many families who attended, and we're excited to see everyone coming through the hallways. At our first PTO meeting, we welcomed a new board this year, so we had a lot of members turn over in the PTO board, so we have still a great amount of involvement from our parents, which is exciting, and so we look forward to working with our new board members and our kindergarten families. So we have our coffee and Kleenex PTO meeting on the first day of kindergarten, and it was well-attended. We have four new staff members. We have Charlene Egan is a special education teacher. Kate Scully is a new reading specialist. We also have Alyssa DeLuca, who is coming to us from South School as well, and she is teaching fourth grade for us at Foster and was a fourth-grade teacher at South. And we also have Danielle Morrissey, who is our long-term adjustment counselor substitute. Today, we, we are already back and running into our groups and meetings. Today, we had a meeting with our Green Team parents, as well as a representative from Holly Hill Farms, so we are continuing to do some of our collaborative work with farming and collaborating with Holly Hill Farms, and we're working to look at this year and what our plantings will be, so some of that work was happening today. We're excited about that. And in addition, we are planning our Bike and Walk to School Day on September 27th, so that is going to be on Friday, September 27th, for Foster. We have a change for school pictures this year. We are doing our school pictures during the day. Previously, at Foster, school pictures were done in the evenings, so this year, we're changing it to during the day, and that will take place on the 26th, as well as our curriculum nights are planned for the 18th and the 25th. This year, part of our theme is "I am a masterpiece" for our school, as part of our school improvement plan, and so we're really focusing on individual students and how they're, what each individual student's strengths are, and how that builds into a masterpiece. And we are also, just to speak of enrollment, we have increased enrollment as well. So last year, we started the school year at 480 students, and this year, we are currently have 493 students, but have two new enrollees within, that will occur this week. So we will be up to 495 to start the school year. And we are preparing for the visit from MSBA tomorrow. Thank you.
I'm just passing down a bookmark that we created to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Plymouth River School. We look pretty good for our age. So the theme, just going off of that, the theme for the year will be honoring the past, celebrating the present, and building the future. And we have a committee that will develop activities throughout the year, including some fun trivia from the past and things that students might wish for the future, so we're riding that theme for this year, and I think it will be an exciting year for that. We happily welcome two new staff members. We have Dr. Bulger, our new school psychologist, who we did not steal from anybody. And, yes, I hunted for him. And then we have Kendall Ingram, our new Spanish teacher, who has many years' experience, and she has been fabulous so far. We also welcome 15 new families. We had an open house the Thursday before school started, and the open houses, we usually do a K to five open house, but for half an hour before everybody else comes, we welcome our new families and give them some, before the big crowd comes, some private time to either have a tour or talk to all the new families before integrating everybody else. So the open house is very successful, the energy, the smiles, that will kick anyone back into back-to-school fever, and it was really just a great day. The kids were excited. Couple tears, but that was only from the parents, no kids, which is always nice. We have some great new additions, thanks to our collaborative efforts with the Scouts. I love when former students contact me and want to give back to PRS. So we had Ryan Trinchette. He created a sensory path on our playground, which really came out nice. If you haven't had a chance to stop over, or I did post some pictures on Facebook, check it out, it's really came out great. It's a sensory path, and then he also, there's a very hungry caterpillar, and it has a scavenger hunt all over the playground, so the kids love it. Jenna Burnett built a Gaga ball pit, and that is new and very exciting. Everyone wants to use that. And Eliza Bastis is starting a community service club after school for her Girl Scout award. In two weeks, I'll be bringing 81 students to Yarmouth Port for the annual Cape Cod field trip, so that is still going, and the kids are very excited for that. And coming soon, I think Tony or somebody, Derek might have spoke of it, the Start With Hello Week. All of the schools will be participating in that and creating some activities to really create a culture of inclusion and valuing each person as an individual. And also, if you don't follow our Facebook page, if you follow it, I did post a video from the first day of school, just with some fun photos from that day. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The sensory path that you spoke of is just terrific, and I took some pictures of it, and I'll send them to the members of the committee, but this, but I'm not, I know where it ends up, but I'm not sure where, what that door is where it starts. So describe its location for the members of the school committee, and then they'll see some photos of this tomorrow.
It's on the back playground, behind the basketball court, down near the third grade.
Okay.
But it's out in back of the, between the soccer nets and the basketball court, and it was newly paved, so it was a nice surface for him to paint on, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's such an honor to follow all of my well-spoken colleagues. You think of all these things you left out as soon as you hear how great they are. So I just want to say, we've had a wonderful start also. I'm likening it to a symphony, but I think that's happened in all six schools. It certainly began beautifully with everybody doing their part, and we also, we have 514 students who we welcome, and many new families. We have 15 new families, and we also have two new MEKO families, which is wonderful. And we had a nice, did a very similar thing. We had the half-hour where the new families came first, and then everyone came, and our amazing, very-involved PTO, and we're so lucky in this town, I think we all would say we have amazing, very-involved PTOs, ran a beautiful kind of welcome-back. Everyone could go around the building, and then also go out on the playground, and that's so helpful. And before that, we had many opportunities as well for the kindergarteners and any new students who wanted to come and walk through, and certainly any people who couldn't make that Thursday, they were welcome to come any other time. This year, we did steal a staff member, too. We stole a, a fourth-grade teacher who's now a fifth-grade teacher at South from Plymouth River, so it's nice to know that we share, and people move around, and they're all so fantastic, and we let each other know how great they are, and if there's a place for somebody somewhere who has wonderful talent, it's great that we hold on to them. So we stole Melissa Hammrock from Plymouth River, so we now have another Mrs. Hammrock at South School, and I know many of you remember the former Mrs. Hammrock, who also worked at South School, so it's kind of fun. And we also have a new adjustment counselor who's coming to us from Malden, and she's already hit the ground running, so that's great. Her name is Vanessa Brier. And we had a last-minute surprise in that we had a part-time leave, actually a full-year leave in first grade, and we were lucky enough to have Mrs. Stephanie O'Brien, who I know a lot of you know, stepped right into the role, and it's like she never skipped a beat, and I think everyone in town knows who she is, so that's worked out really, really well. So to continue on the symphony, the prelude, of course, was day one, which went really well, and I would agree with Melissa, we didn't have many tears, just a few parents. And I always used to say to my fifth graders, when they would go up to the sixth grade, where you all do a great job transitioning them, I would say, "It'll take you a day or two, but give your parents two to three months, especially if you're the oldest in the family." So, you know, we were counseling a lot of parents on the sidewalk, but the kids were absolutely great. And what I love seeing, and I'm sure you all do, too, is that the older children are so willing to help the younger children, and help them feel better, help them get off the bus, make sure they're sitting, make sure they find the door to go in, and everything like that. And it was very exciting for us, I know Tony loves this, too, to welcome back preschoolers, so much so that I got a little sidetracked today at the end of the fire drum, when I was supposed to be going out front to talk to the firemen, and I saw all the preschoolers lined up. We have the Kids in Action preschool, and they're just adorable, and we thank Jackie and her staff, and we're so happy to have you back. It's just great. It's just wonderful, so. They're just so adorable. All children are, they're so beautiful, big smiles on their faces. Everyone's taking part in our symphony. I want to thank the parents who sent us enthusiastic students who are so ready to be back with wind beneath their wings, get it, the wind instruments. I want to thank the staff. They've played an amazing part in preparing for a successful start. Maintenance, custodians, and summer staff at South, 220 Central Street, school committee, administration, they have pulled strings to get us up and running. And then the bus drivers, of course, and the cafeteria staff and paraeducators, they continue to be the percussion of the day because they keep things moving right along from beginning to end. And finally, the teachers are the brass, the brass section, making the curriculum come alive, and that's already happening. I know in all the schools, the kids are very excited about what they're learning. And like the other schools, we also have themes, and I think all our themes are very similar. We honor all children, all types of learner, and at South School, we have the bee as our mascot, which scares my husband because he's allergic to bees, but that's okay. And we always say, you know, be happy, be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn. And A number one, and I know we all preach this, be kinder than necessary. So that is one thing we talk about all the time, and of course, we've already jumped into that with the kids, and we like to use the village, the village analogy as well, and to respect all learners, and of course, working, of course, towards humanity and equity. As I said, be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, and be kinder than necessary. We all work hard, like in all the schools, teaching children habits of mind, and of course, I think we all believe in this as well, teamwork makes the dream work, and we always talk at South about how when the birds fly south, they fly in a V, and something I only learned about 10 years ago is that, a lot of you probably knew this already, the head bird constantly changes, and therefore, the bird at the top of the V, there's, the group is 71% more efficient, so we talk about that all the time, and we say, "V to U," when someone solves a problem or comes up with a solution, because of course, no one person can do that all by themselves. So those are all our themes, and of course, don't want to disappoint you, Dr. LaBilwa, I know that we're all also working on spreading toolbox, and we've already started at South School on the breathing tool, because that's very important the first couple of weeks, so that works out great, and we look forward to doing the other 11. Actually, we added a 13th tool. It's the humor tool, so I'm sure everyone does a humor tool as well. So we're looking forward to the 13 tools, and we're looking forward to so many things. Our, our building is 1948, but the, I'm sorry, our school was built in 1948, but our building is 20 years old on Veterans Day weekend, so we're going to do some fun 20 things this year as well. And we're looking forward to our two back-to-school nights. One of them's this week. We do three grades each night, and one is on the 25th, and on Friday, which I scheduled it on Friday, the 13th, fingers crossed, everybody, but that is my lucky day. That's another story in my life. And we're having the third grade bike rodeo. We're having pictures next week. We're looking forward to our harvest party, and all kinds of things. So I thank you all very much. It's been a great, it sounds like it's been a great start for everybody, and we thank you for all your support. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'll just say one more time how much I appreciate all of your principals who have worked so hard to make the opening fabulous. I did get a chance to get to every one of the schools. I visited countless classrooms, countless, and went through and spoke to them, and if I didn't visit the classroom, I, we either welcome students or we had them leave for the day, so, or say goodbye to them. So fabulous work for all of you, and thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. I know it's late, you've all been here for over 12 hours now or so, so you're free to leave after this if you want, or you don't have to stay. You will not offend us if you leave, so thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That's really wonderful. Thank you. That was a nice tradition to start.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So next on my list, and thank you for indulging in that, I know it's a little bit probably new, but I really think it's important for the community to see the fine work they do on opening. Opening enrollment. In your packet, you have an enrollment sheet, and it's changing, and I would still say it's still changing on a regular basis. I will say that there is a typo, and I'll go to the bottom of your sheet where it says total district enrollment. We think that's correct, a 4185, I mean 84, yeah, I'm sorry, 4185, which is four more than we had in June. That's, as of today, we're still working this through. Our pre-K is actually down from 85 to 71 this year. I would anticipate that'll come up a little bit as we move through the year. Out-of-district placement is a typo. It is not 41, it's 51, and so, and we're still working on some of the logistics of our out-of-district, and we've had some students move in, et cetera, so we're, we're going to, we're going to work on that number again and give you a more solid number in a couple of weeks. Our vocational students are up by, from five to nine now, so we're at nine this year. So the total of whom, Hingham Public Schools has a program under fiscal responsibility is actually 4316, if you take the 10 that was miscalculated, so it's, it's two less than last year, as of right now. So- So I will bring another number in two weeks. I think we'll have a much more solid number as we continue to work through any of the students who might have left or come in. Just a recap and say thank you. Many of you attended our leadership team meeting on the 26th of August at the country club here in Hingham. Wonderful day, and which we, the focus for our work this year are really three things that are overreaching for us, or overarching, sorry, not overreaching, overarching. Goals of ensuring equity, ensuring safety and security of our buildings, and of course, continuing academic excellence. Our administrative team, our leadership team, will be working and continue to flush those out, to put action steps to those things. In fact, we're beginning that work this week. And so we'll continue to update on those things. As we talked about equity, Dr. Libilawa had actually done a little of the opening piece on equity, and I think he's ready for that now.
Sure. Be happy to. I might just need...
You want this?
Please.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. I think it's right here.
Thank you for presenting this again, Dr. Libilawa.
No problem.
... the convocation, and I thought it was important for the community to hear.
Sure.
Dr. Libilawa agreed, so we wanted to have more to hear about this.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about the opening message that we gave to our faculty when they returned last Wednesday. We began my portion of the presentation by reviewing the mission of the district, which was to provide challenging and comprehensive educational programs in a safe and supportive environment, enabling all students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. We reiterated that this mission really takes the collective effort of our faculty, our students, our parents, our community on a broader level each and every day, to help us actualize what's outlined here in our mission. I then wanted to present to the faculty sort of a celebration of successes from last school year. The range of professional development offerings that were offered to them. We have continued to receive a lot of very positive feedback about the quality of our professional development program, and the opportunity, excuse me, that they feel to be engaged in topics that are a professional interest to them. We also talked about living through some really profound infrastructure issues. As you know, the foster evacuation, the Hingham High School fire. I did joke with them and talked about the East Flood, and that if you're biblical, the locusts are doing a day, just because of the amount of things, really, that we've had to manage relative to the infrastructure, and its impact on learning have been profound. We also talked about year two, really completion, completing year two of our computer science immersion initiative. We are going to be presenting, actually, just a couple of months, at the Joint Mass Association of School Committees and Mass Association of School Superintendents Joint Conference down on the Cape. And we completed year two of our rollout of CS and year one of our computer science immersion program. We launched our social-emotional, our Hingham-tiered System of Support, social-emotional focus. I noted that we had just completed a presentation down at the Mass Association of School Superintendents on our multi-tiered model, our rollout, and how we have been able to make the progress that we had made to the other school district leaders from across the Commonwealth. Tier one piloted through K to five, and that tier one was the rollout of our toolbox curriculum that rolled out, as you know, K through five, and actually, this year is K through six in the district. It just rolled up to middle school this year. We also talked about the piloting of tier two, including the universal screenings, and then small group interventions, and that occurred across the entire district in grades K through 12. We completed grade four rollout of the standards-based report card, so we're making progress there. And actually, grade five just kicked off last week, their work toward a redesigned report card that effectively communicates progress towards standards, as opposed to a grade in a particular subject area. We have expanded our curriculum mapping and hope to begin to publish by the end of this year, our first set of curriculum apps to the public, which articulates the scope and sequence of the learning skills and expectations across all content areas in grades K through 12. We also completed the revision of our bullying prevention intervention plan, and we are about to launch that probably in the next two weeks, a public comment period, for the public to then give us feedback on our revisions. We're in the process of preparing a Dear Community letter that sort of updates the community on a variety of subjects, and begins to recruit participants for some district-wide work that we're doing. We also implemented a revised district curriculum accommodation plan across the entire district. So I really felt it was important to frame the year with a really, sort of looking back on our successes coming out of the last school year. We then turned our attention to looking to the work to come. So once again, we're going to be offering a wide variety of professional development offerings, and we are incredibly proud in support, proud of the support we're able to give our educators through our professional development model. We're going to be looking ahead to year three of our computer science initiative, including the expansion and integration of the standards across even more curriculum areas. We'll be looking at full year one rollout of our multi-tiered model for social-emotional learning. Remember, last year was our pilot, and now we're moving into full implementation mode. This fall, we'll be undertaking the development and rollout of the Hingham-tiered System of Support Academic Arm. So as you know, the HTSS looks at a multi-tiered model in both academic, as well as social-emotional areas. While the social-emotional is now up and running, we'll be turning our attention more focused toward our academic interventions in reading, writing, and mathematics. We'll be looking at really a redesign of what's currently known as the RTI program across the elementary grades, and looking at a rollout in grades six through eight. So the goal would be, by the winter, to provide to all of you an update and proposal of what we're hoping to have funded to the budget in terms of a K through eight academic intervention model. So more to come on that, and we'll be forming that group in the coming weeks. So if anyone's listening in the community, we are actively looking for volunteers to engage with us in this work. So the more people involved, the better the outcome is, right? We'll also be looking critically at the structure around our elementary parent-teacher conferences, and we'll be forming a teacher-working group to begin to examine when they fall and sort of what the content should be. Right now, they're sort of there because they've always been there, they don't necessarily align with report cards. We want to be thoughtful about when we're actually providing that time to our community and to our faculty. We'll also be forming a district-wide technology committee to update and sort of produce a new K through 12 technology plan, as well as a group to help us oversee the rollout of a new district website, which is projected to roll out on January 1. So more to come on that front, but this, all of this work will begin in the year to come. The other piece that we also discussed with the faculty was sort of above and beyond all of this, a real district focus on equity. And so we presented this to the faculty as a starting point for an ongoing conversation that began really that day at convocation, and that we hope to continue throughout the academic year. Why are we now talking about this issue of equity? First of all, we have seen a shift in the broader national culture relative to kindness and perspective-taking and tolerance of other people's points of view. We've also had a number of critical incidents here in the district, which have led us to a level of understanding that some of our students don't necessarily feel safe, that there have been some issues relative to race, and relative to gender, religion, that we feel are critically important for us to address head-on. We want to be seen as forward-thinking in this area and not reactive. And so the feeling has been up to this point, that we have been dealing with sort of critical incidents as they emerge, doing the best we can to educate. The volume of those incidents have led us to sort of be more reflective, to say, maybe there's something more going on here, right? So let's press pause, take a collective view, and talk about what we need to do to ensure that all of our students feel safe and secure in our schools. And the final part of why now is it's directly connected to our mission, right? A challenging and supportive educational environment for all of our students, right? It's very important to us that every single child who comes to school with us every day feels safe within our four walls. Before we could really get into talking critically about equity, we first began with a definition. And so, again, the sort of the dictionary definition of equity refers to a justice according to natural law or right, specifically, freedom from bias or favoritism. And that's sort of the Merriam-Webster definition of what equity is. When we think about it in terms of educational equity, it's generally referred to as fairness, right, for all people who are participating. The challenge here is what exactly, then, does fairness mean, right? Fairness may not, is that fairness of outcome? Is it equity or fairness in terms of resources or resource allocation? Or is it relative, fairness relative to achievement and academic outcome? These are real questions, right, that as you begin this conversation, these other variables really do present themselves to be addressed and analyzed as we engage in this work. We showed, from the Interaction Institute for Social Change, Agnes McGuire's graphic, which I'm sure you've seen before, which tries to differentiate for folks the difference between equality or equity, right? Equality is the concept of giving everybody the same, right? So everybody's going to get the same box to try to see over that fence, regardless of your physical size, right? Where the content of equity is less about giving everybody the same, and it's really focused on giving everybody what they need to be successful, right? When we talk about educational equity, we're really also talking about, the conversation's really anchored in two key concepts, right? There's two key dimensions of educational equity. The first is fairness. Again, ensuring personal and social circumstance do not prevent the attainment of academic outcome or potential, right? So that is, in educational equity talk, how we define fairness. So it's not equality of outcome, it's not equality of resource. It is ensuring that personal and social circumstances, right, so that the individual things going on with me have no bearing on my attainment of my potential, right? That in spite of all the things going on in my life, when I come into our schools, into our classrooms, I am giving an equal shot of attaining the same potential as anybody else who's in that same classroom. The other key concept or dimension is inclusion. Inclusion is not necessarily related to the concept we think of it, for example, in special education, right? Inclusion, in this instance, means setting a basic minimum standard for education by all students, regardless of background, personal characteristics, or location. And we did, just to give credit where it's due, this research really came out of the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, and they're one of the major organizations working toward educational equity. Equity in education also talks about, it differentiates for us, vertical versus horizontal equity. So horizontal equity is the, is relative to the equal treatments of equals, where vertical equities refers to, vertical equity, or equity, rather, refers to the equal treatment of unequals, right? So the challenge really belongs in vertical equity, or inequities that exist, when everybody is treated the same, regardless of personal circumstance or need. And the, well, the other thing we have to keep in mind is that this is not something relative, that's really unique to the Hingham Public Schools, right? That what we know is equity is impacted by socioeconomic factors, by race, by gender, by disability. So there's a lot of key variables here that we know we have to be thoughtful of when initiating our conversation and work relative to equity. Just to sort of, I wanted to step back from it and help the faculty see that this is not an issue unique to Hingham. When we look at countries where there are, there is a, where there is large gaps in wealth distribut, wealth distribution. So example, there is large categories of haves and large categories of have-nots. That would be really high income inequality, right? Where there's these big gaps in sort of the socioeconomic variable that we know invariably impacts equity. The United States, for example, is over here on the right. When we look at the, when this data is then analyzed against average math and reading scores, what we see is that countries with high income equality perform consistently lower than those countries where there is low income equality. So I'm not suggesting that, and you'll often hear educational researchers, there's always a focus on Finland, right? What is Finland doing? They're number one in the world. What is happening? One of the major things that people don't necessarily talk about when they talk about Finland is that culturally, it's very low income equality. So there, we don't have have and have-nots, to the same extent, rather. I'm not going to suggest there aren't any, but the extent is not the same. And so there's nothing we're going to be able to do in our work that's going to fix this issue. But it's important to set the tone, that there are going to be variables, right, that we have no control over, they are what they are. So what is our response to that going to be, right? So what is the work we're going to do to ensure that income equality, for example, plays no role in our students' experience here in the district? So looking at it another way, here is, again, from the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, this looks at scores on the PISA test. And what it looks at is the differences between the academic performance of a student from a low socioeconomic environment to a high socioeconomic environment. And the darker the color, the higher the difference between the performance of kids from environments from low socioeconomic backgrounds versus high socioeconomic backgrounds. And the United States, you'll notice there, as well as most of Western Europe, right, most of developed Western Europe there, have really high differences in achievement that are related to socioeconomic status. So now what, right? So there, we know that there are going to be variables that we can't control, we know that they're going to be, that there are going to be sociocultural issues that we're not going to be able to completely control for, but we need to begin the work, to begin to systematically look at our district to determine those places where we can begin to make differences for kids. We're going to begin with an examination of design. We're going to be looking at our academic selection and offerings, and ensure that the offerings that we're providing to students are reflective of the students of which we're trying to teach. Could it be a structural issue? Do we have issues in our leveling systems, right? What is going on in our structure? And could we make some improvements or revisions in structure, which may help us systematically address issues of equity? We're going to be looking at our practices. One of the key practices of equity, and this will come up later when we get, when I come back to you, sort of mid-year, to talk to you about the work that the academic task force has been working on, is are there universal interventions and support for all kids across multiple content areas? Do we have strong homeschool partnerships? Are we equipping and enabling our parents, for example, to help with homework? Are we giving them the skills and knowledge necessary to be supportive of their student when they come home? We're going to be, have a real focus on our own celebrations of diversity. Are we actually celebrating and embracing, or are we just wearing the pin for the week because it's what everyone else is doing? And finally, we're going to be initiating really challenging conversations of privilege with our faculty and staff, to push their thinking and to encourage a broader perspective as we begin to take on this work. We'll also do an examination of our resources. We will work to recruit a personnel workforce that is reflective of the students that we're teaching. We'll also be critically examining our funding allocation and sources to ensure that there's equity in allocation of funds and resources across the district. All of this work will occur for what purpose? And that is really building what we're referring to as a roadmap to the future. Our goal is by June of 2020, to be back to present to the committee the district's equity and inclusion plan for launch in September of 2020. And that work begins now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. That is a lot to tackle, we understand, and we appreciate it, though, because it is very timely, and if any district can do it, this one can. So thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll go back in here and put myself in. Okay, next up is a, I just want to tell you about the MECO social event, which was the Ice Cream Social, I think on the 15th of August, and several of you attended that. But a fabulous night, I've heard great feedback of... I've heard great feedback of, Hingham had a tremendous number of people there, administrators, school committee members. And that was mentioned, actually, I think, in the Metco newspaper as well. Love to have us there. And I think it's really important to meet the families and, and it put families at ease about coming to school here. So really important, so. I'm sorry, that really went haywire, didn't it?
He's plugging in again, maybe.
That was a very, that was a really great event. A few of us went to it and it was great. We did have a chance to meet with some families, both existing and some new, so it was nice to chat with them. And I know, don't know what that, that's never happened before. Okay, unplug that for a minute. And I know Carol Florian Perez, our Metco Director, has a few community and family events that are being planned for the fall. I think it's for some apple picking, a Thanksgiving, they're going to, they're organizing a Thanksgiving feast that we think we'll do in Boston with families from Hingham and families in Boston. So some really great things coming this year.
I should have mentioned it earlier, didn't mean to interrupt, but we're going to be partnering with Kathy Lopes, who's a social worker from Metco Inc. Headquarters, who's the Metco's Director of Equity and Inclusion, to support our work as we launch our Equity Inclusion Plan.
Oh, that's great, thank you. Yeah, we met with her at the, at the conference over the summer. Yes, she was very.
She's wonderful.
Very great. Oh, that's terrific, thank you.
So great things to come this year, that's for sure, out of the work. And finally, I'll say the upcoming MSBA visit tomorrow, which has already been mentioned. I know, Dr. Ed, you probably, you plan to be there as part of the Building Committee for the town. I don't know if, Michelle, you're coming or not, but.
I am not. Ed is going to be, he's going to wear two hats. He's going to represent us as a school committee and as our building committee representative to the.
Excellent.
To the building, yes.
Excellent. So I look forward to that.
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
Okay. Great, thank you so much. Item five, communications. So I'll start with your communications, Dr. Austin.
What I have for you, I, I just wanted to go over, in your packet, there is a packet from the very busy Facilities Department report. And just, I'm going to highlight really the work that's planned ahead in September. And we've, we've done many things already, which is already, we've talked about. But in September coming up, we have the installation of a 700 by four-foot fence at East Elementary in order to provide safety and security to the back perimeter. We're going to rebuild the South Elementary heating system, pump and motor system. And there's some other things on there. I have no idea what an addition of a VFD is, but maybe you do.
Very good frequency drive.
Thank you.
This is part of the Green Communities Initiative. We, we had a combination in our capital budget, sort of half from our capital budget and half from the Green Initiative to rebuild those pumps and then install VFDs. The VFD portion is the Green Community portion.
Thank you. We are, the MSBA study, Senior Study Visit at Foster is tomorrow, as I've already mentioned. East Keyless Entry Software is being updated. The Public Facilities Core Assessment of the Town Master Plan is scheduled for 9:24 at Central Office. And then the major annual PM schedule for all emergency generator sets throughout the school department. So lots of work to happen in September, and I appreciate their work very much. So that's my communication on that.
That's great. Yes.
I have one question on the August, says that for the East Elementary that our insurance carrier has been notified. Doesn't the vendor have insurance and that their insurance should be covering this as opposed to ours?
Yeah, we would notify our insurance carrier and then any, you know, they will sort of work with the insurance carriers, the vendors' insurance. They're not going to pay it if, you know, they won't, they won't pay it if it turns out to be totally that vendor's fault, so.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure that that was being followed.
That's always what happens, Liza, we report it and then we don't really have to like go directly to that carrier. That's why we have the insurance agent. They, they actually work that and the insurance company will work with the other insurance company to make sure there's reimbursement and, you know, the, the correct people are essentially paying for it.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay. Excellent.
Anything else you want to add to that at all that I missed or didn't cover that you think is important, Joan?
No, I think that's, that's it. They've been hard at work. You know, nobody expects to have a flood on August 25th and, you know, the, the state of the building was not really good, you know? Heat rooms were really lost and the first floor was worse than the second floor. An amazing feat, if you, if you had seen it. It's just, in my view, it's an amazing feat. Everybody just responded so quickly to get all that done in eight days, get schools started, and then another four days for the kindergarten, so.
It was impressive.
It's a great group. You know, Kate, Katie and Doug and Barbara Pie in that maintenance office deserve all the credit for it, for mobilizing and staying on these vendors and stuff. It's not like I'm out there all the time. They're just keeping me posted.
Yeah, that's great. They're doing great job.
A lot of bills to pay. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of back house stuff going on with it, where, you know, the fire's not done and the flood's not done from a payment standpoint, because you just got to get all the side of it.
We'll be prepared when the locusts arrive.
But they're, they're making it ready for the kids and the teachers, so that's, that's all we care about. And we can catch up with the paperwork and the backend when we get there.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. We will welcome Emma Kilty back with Student Communications. Welcome back, Emma. Thank you.
As summer came to an end, the freshman orientation was off to a very good start with over 350 new incoming freshmen to the school. And they, after they went to each one of their classes, they went to the gym to look into the clubs that our school offers. And then they enjoyed a nice barbecue outside. And the student government provided over 60 volunteers to welcome and help them, guide them to their class on that day. And also, in our cafeteria, we added on a bulletin board the different clubs that you can join after the initial, like, activity fair that they could have joined them so that if they didn't get something then, they can go back and look at it. And they also added a new bulletin board outside the gym for all of the sports team's schedules. And there's a new poster for the Mamma Mia play in the cafeteria. And tomorrow night is freshman parents' night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. The Hingham High School Botany Class and Club have harvested lettuce and flowers. And the lettuce will be eaten in our own cafeteria. And to continue with staying green, the football team completed the first slash the trash of the year. And on a sports front, the golf team joined the fight against Alzheimer's disease and won all of their matches so far. The football team beat Braintree. The boys and girls soccer beat Plymouth North on this past Friday. And the both boys and girls soccer team also beat Quincy today. And while kids are hard at work, Livy Kate's a biology, biology teacher at the high school, completed an Ironman World in Nice, France, this past weekend. And lastly, the library will be open this upcoming Thursday for all students to sign up and access all the books as they're just finishing inventory.
I wanted to say, Emma, congratulations on becoming one of the captains of the girls' soccer team.
Thank you.
I tend to be a little biased about soccer, because that's the only really good spot that I understand everything about it, so.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything.
Thank you. All right, thanks so much, Emma. All right, item 5.3, Other Communications. I think, Liza, do you want to just quickly fill us in on the master plan?
Yes. So the Master Plan Committee will be having our first meeting on September 18th. And one of the key objectives for the committee is to do community outreach. So after our experience with the superintendent search, I plan to share a lot of what we did to help with that effort. And one of the things I'm going to ask of the committee is to make sure we have a clear explanation of what a master plan is and what the purpose of it is. This is required under Mass General Law for a town to have a master plan. And it really focuses on, for the next 10 years, what a community wants to look for in economic development, housing, land use plans, culture and historic resources, open space and recreation, community services and facilities, transportation and circulation issues, sustainability, natural resources, water and energy issues. I know the impacts of climate change is a key factor for Hingham, especially since we're on the water. And there is a consultant that has been hired to assist with this process, and it'll be run through the Community Planning Office. And on the town website, they are going to be putting up all the resources and the schedule of all the meetings posted on there. If you look on the town website and search for Master Plan Committee, it comes up. And at the end of September, what the school department's going to participate with in the focus group of public facilities. But they're having various sort of focus groups for the staff and town hall and across the departments, as well as anyone from the public, to be able to add more information to the consultants on a variety of subject matters. And that's, schedule is posted on the website. So historic preservation, public facilities, transportation, open space, economic development, sustainability, water and energy, and land use. Those will be September 24th or October 9th, depending on the subject matter. But then there'll be other open meetings to add input. So we will maybe ask to use our communication methods through the schools to spread the message of all of this as well. So I will report back after the first meeting, but it's underway and see where our town takes us the next 10 years.
Great, thank you.
Liza, I'm glad that you mentioned about you guys are coming up with the definition of exactly what that entails. Perhaps you wanted to put a little, you know, disclosure there that that master plan has nothing to do with the school's master plan? Because there seems to be a lot of confusion out there.
Yes, and that's why I'm going to raise this at the meeting, because a lot of different departments have master plans. And I, I agree that I think there's confusion over, and I think there's also, people have said to me, isn't this about facilities in town? What about town hall? What about a senior center? What about the schools? What about the library? And it's not a, it, it will include some facilities. That's the consultant's response that covered that. I think that's what the open session for public facilities is. And, like, I want to see all public safety facilities. There's no mention of where fire stations are going to go, and that's been a big topic in town. That's impacted schools and, for past reasons. But if we're going to have growth, where are we putting these fire stations or ambulance? So, so we'll see how that all goes. But, yeah, I think clear, making a clear definition will help people understand even what they're being asked to contribute to.
That's great, thank you.
Did you see the letter to the editor in this week's? Well, I guess last week's Journal?
I did. So I remind me to.
Remind you to follow.
Phone that person, but, yeah, in the Hingham Journal, there was a letter to the editor and the woman was asking for, should there be a representative on the Master Plan Committee from the schools and from the senior population? And town meeting voted for the schools to have representation, a school committee member. And, but the seniors, I think they will be well represented from the people that are on the committee, but there's not specifically a senior center represented, but there are people from affordable housing and other departments. So, so we, the schools are represented, for sure.
And then one other communication that we received, so June Gustafson, President of the Hingham Education Association, has sent me, sent a letter on behalf of the Hingham Education Association Units A and B requesting that we commence the successive negotiations for each unit contract. So we will be putting together our team and, and giving some possible dates and locations of when our team will be ready. So I will get back to you within the next two weeks, I think, with the names and some dates and times. If it's going to be longer than that, I'll, I'll let you know, but we'll endeavor to do that very shortly, so thank you. All right. Six point, six unfinished business, 6.1 is to receive the revised superintendent goals for 2019, 2020, and act as appropriate. So those are in your packets that Dr. Austin has put together?
Yeah, I, just from the, the feedback I received last time, and I tried to tighten that up a little bit better. I think most of it had really around that first professional goal and, which I've done now, to, to change that to, to complete the year one of the new superintendent's induction program, which requires a formal induction plan and specifically designed to engage the community, et cetera, where they are. And I also made them SMART goals with key actions by June 30th of 2020, et cetera, and the actions I'll do under each one. So I tried to incorporate what you had given for feedback and turn that back around to you.
Questions, comments, thoughts on the goals as presented? Anyone?
I think they're really good. And I'm also just going to say I'm glad you kept the mission statement as part of goal number one, too. I think it's really important, so.
I would agree. Does anyone else have anything to add or consider? Or do we want to consider adopting these as Dr. Austin's goals for the year? Yeah? Okay. Make a motion if you are so inclined.
I'll make a motion to adopt the superintendent goals for 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Adopted as is. Thank you very much for taking the time to revise those and setting them up. All right. Item 6.2, to receive an update on the hiring process for legal counsel and act as appropriate. Do you want to start us off, or Liza? Going to turn over Liza as Chair of Salary and Negotiations?
So as follow-up from our last meeting, our Labor Counsel has announced his retirement, and so we've been in the process of interviewing new law firms to represent the school committee and the district. And on August 15th, we had a school salary negotiation subcommittee with full participation of the full school committee, and we had five of seven school committee members with us. And we interviewed three firms that had been identified by the selection committee. And we had very good interviews with all of the firms. They all had great strengths and brought tremendous value to us. And we agreed, based on full services, we narrowed it down to two firms. And then we agreed that the administrative staff and myself and Carrie would do reference checking. And we contacted various communities that were from our 20 benchmark towns or were communities that the firms had significant work that they, and notable work, media-wise notable work, that they had engaged in with the district. And so, based on that feedback, and we've been working on it over the two weeks, we'd like to make a recommendation, and this is from the administration, that we engage with Murphy, Hess, Tumi, and Lehane as our legal counsel. We felt that they offer the level of support and expertise across all the different areas of law that, that we require, education law, Mass General Law, labor relations, employment law, special education law, that, and they're also a local firm based in Quincy, so they're very accessible. And they have a large counsel and large staff that will always be able to provide us with the resources that we need in a timely fashion as well. So that has been the, Carrie, you have anything to add since you called references as well?
No, just that, for both firms, there was very positive things that we've heard about it, but, but. it, but for this firm, it was really glowing, so, for the people I talked to, so.
So if you don't mind, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to enter negotiations with Murphy, Hessy, Toomey, and Lehane to serve as legal counsel for the Hingham School Committee and the Hingham Public Schools.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everyone? Okay, great. Terrific. Thank you so much.
Follow-up, you want me to contact them tomorrow and?
Yeah. I can work with you on a lot of the steps.
Great, thank you. All right, great. Item six point three, to hear an update from long-range planning subcommittee regarding the purchase of a solar-powered scoreboard for the varsity softball field at Hingham High School and act as appropriate. So I think there's information in your packet about this.
That's right. So you have a couple of packages there. You all remember that last month we discussed this, and we got the school committee to approve that the business manager, John Ferris, proceeded to file the application for the waiver of applying for the permit there. John followed through the process of doing that, and he will have some update on that and in a few seconds for us. But before that, I just want to let you know that in terms of trying to be very transparent about the process, we actually posted the meeting of the long-range planning at the field. That happened on August 27th, and part of the agenda was that we would visit the neighbors. We did that. And to, you know, we very, we present to the neighbors, two of them actually, the package, one of them was not home, but the one that, it's right next to the girls' softball field was home, took us to their yard. They really appreciated the fact that we took our time to go there and showed them our intentions. But they also showed us some balls on the backyard, so, you know, just to highlight that balls still fallen in the yard. So, you know, we had a very great conversation, and I think they have no objection to what we're doing. I wanted to invite Nas and Dr. Schreier to say a few words before we pass on to John, if you'd like, to add anything to what I said.
Yeah, I think you captured it. I think they were really receptive and excited that we went there to talk to them, and they were, they were grateful.
One of, just one of the neighbors that was not home ended up in mail with me and asking for further clarification. Dr. Schreier was kind enough to go back and speak with her, and she was satisfied. So John?
So it's good, so at the, on a, at the same time I was working with the planning board, and I had gone through Miri's, have done them to see if we, about, you know, what we would do for this waiver. And as, so I completed the application, told of the action steps we would take, the fact that the scoreboard would be placed, where it would be placed positionally. The packet that I sent off is actually in the, in the, in the packet on the web anyways, explained to them that the long-range planning committee had an open meeting at the site to visit the neighbors and, you know, to make sure that we addressed any concerns that they may have. All those things took place, and then I, so I sent the draft off to Miri to say, is this completed? And she looked and she saw that the price was below $20,000 and reached out to my client seat to ask, you know, if this is under $20,000, do they even need the site plan waiver? So I went back and checked with her, and then we checked with Mike, and it determined that the project is under $20,000, so there's no need for a site, site plan waiver. Okay, so we didn't have to appear before the planning board tonight where it would have been scheduled. And then what we can do is we can go immediately to permit. So, you know, based on the, and at that time, too, Ed and I actually had a conversation about the scoreboard that we initially had anticipated. You all have a picture of what the scoreboard would actually look like. And the initial one that we had for that price of 16.7 was one where it didn't have the Hingham High School logo at the top, and we were discussing that. And I just thought that, you know, if visitors are coming by, you know, it could be grandma, grandpa sometimes. Some people will know they're here playing Hingham, but if the grandparents come, they won't know, you know? But if they look up, they'll see it's Hingham High School. Every time I've gone to a game at other fields, you know, I always see, okay, well, at least I know where I am. I always know where I am, but some people may not. So I thought that, you know, we should probably get a quote for that. And the price still stays under the $20,000. The revised price was, you have that form here, I think it was 17, $17,710 to install that. And that would be coming out of the, the high school fields project account, where there's a balance of $148,000. And that account was established back when we did the field project. And it was intended to be at the discretion of the school committee to provide enhancements to the field as they saw fit. And this certainly is, is an appropriate one, I think. It's, it's, it's the, it's the girls' varsity softball field. I mean, initially, it may not have been planned to be that, but it's in such better shape. The varsity chose to play there. You know, we have, we have scoreboards at the, at the boys' fields and stuff, so, I mean, you know, it's, it's, would be an equality thing, I think. I think it's appropriate to put it there. This one, we don't have electricity, so this is solar operated. And, you know, I recommend that the committee vote to, you know, install this. So that the vendor, if the committee were to vote yes, would contact the vendor, the vendor would have to pull a permit through our building department. And then we could get underway with the installation at this current updated price.
Just want to add that the committee, the subcommittee also discussed it on August 27th, the fact that Liza had brought up the idea of approaching the boosters. And there was a consensus among the three of us that we should not approach the boosters at this time, just because there's a lot of the pipeline. We have gone to the boosters for a lot of items, and we are prepared to go back to them for other future, you know, projects. But that, you know, we feel comfortable that this money set aside there for items such as this one, and it is money that has been raised through the community. So it would make sense to just, you know, go in and use the fund from the high school field fund. That is a recommendation from the subcommittee.
Which boosters are you thinking of? Are you thinking of softball boosters specifically?
In general, any, any boosters. We said, we had, we had, we agreed that we would not approach any boosters or any other group out there at this stage.
I talked to the baseball boosters, because I wanted to have an understanding of what they've contributed on their field.
Baseball or softball?
Baseball, because I have a concern of equity, that the baseball boosters have provided for their fields a tremendous amount of field enhancements. And, and now softball is asking for something, and when they came and asked, they even brought up, we would be willing to contribute to this. And so I was curious, like, okay, I know baseball's contributed a lot, I want to get an idea. And so they have, they confirmed that they've provided the foul ball posts, the batting cage. They've also been raising, they raised money last year that, for the first time, they did contribute to charity, to Lupus Foundation. But they also were raising money to put in dugouts, because they don't have any dugouts, and they need some kind of roof structure. And so they haven't raised all of it, and they're still planning to work on raising more. So that, this is why I made the request that we get a contribution, because, and then also I hear dug, I hear dugouts, and I'm thinking, that makes me think, okay, now the baseball team is going to raise money because they want dugouts, then the softball team's going to come back and say, well, we want dugouts. And I just feel like this is, and with all the other priorities that we've set for the fields and that we have to do the turf, that this, I still feel, and now even more after talking to the baseball people and what they've put into their field, and we're not asking softball to do anything, I don't think is fair. And since we have a lot of other enhancements that could be done, this came out of one request, and we're jumping on it. And we're not having a plan of what are all the enhancements that need to be done for the field. And we know the turf carpet has to be done in a couple of years. So that's why I'm bringing up about getting equity. I, I really feel that, we haven't had any other enhancements except for what boosters have added themselves to the property that I know of, except regrading it, which we've done out of the regular budget. So I think 17.7 is a big ticket to take out of that fund when there's a lot of other things that could be considered, and we're not considering them, so.
So just for information to Liza, while, while we're, you know, doing the outreach to the neighbors, they brought to their attention that perhaps we would consider, we should consider also putting a net in. If you look at the freshman soccer field, you know, there is a netting that, you know, you're able to, you know, close and open to prevent the balls from falling to the parking lot for safety issues. They asked if we'd kindly, you know, also consider putting one of those nets there, because by the time the softball, you know, comes to the yard, is actually coming by the fence there. That's where it broke the, you know, the window. So we will be looking into that as well. So, you know, for something like that, we definitely would reach out to the boosters. But, you know, sticking to the equity issue, it's a matter of equity. All the other fields already have the scoreboards. The girls' softball field doesn't. So that is another reason why we wanted to address this right away.
I understand that, but the, the fields that were there, they all got scoreboards.
Not that one.
When the plan was done. When the fields were done, they all got the scoreboards. So, well, I mean, that, then you get freshman baseball is further back on that same field. Are they going to ask for a scoreboard now? You know, once we put the softball one in? I guess-
If they have a scoreboard, where did the scoreboard go?
If they have, if all the fields had a scoreboard, how come they don't have a scoreboard now? Is it because they moved the field?
Yeah. They weren't going to use that as the varsity field-
Okay.
-at the time, so.
What happened was, when the, when the, we did the field development, and John can jump in on this, and he's told me he scratched his head on this, but the decision was made, in my sense, by the former athletic director, to leave what was then the varsity girls' softball field alone. That's the field that has the scoreboard right now. And the reason, I think, was that if it was done at the initial, there would have been no softball for the girls. When the field then was developed across the street with the brand-new dugouts and brand-new benches and brand-new cages, obviously, that's what we're talking about tonight. So that, that's a bit of the background.
I appreciate us providing a scoreboard for a varsity field. I understand that. My issue is that it's such a large cost. It's significantly more, and we have other costs, and it's just come out of, just because somebody came and asked for it, and it's been on no plan. And I could understand it if we were getting a contribution for it, so that it lowers our cost. But now you're telling us, telling me you're not going to bother.
No, that's not-
Personally, I don't think-
That's not what Carlo said. What Carlo said was that the decision of the three of us was not to approach the boosters at this point, with the very clear understanding that the booster's doors will be knocked on in the future for other big ticket items. I don't consider this to be, compared to what we're looking at, which you've mentioned, this is not a big ticket item. So-
I can, I can-
We'll let you know, and we'll look forward to your help when it comes time for the, for the, the replacement of the rug, among other things, because that will be a big ticket item. That was my thinking.
I've been asking for a plan for the replacement of the rug since the day we put the rug down. So I'm all for having a plan for replacing the rug. But I-
There's a point that I completely agree with you.
Yeah. My issue is that this came out of nowhere. It's a chunk. We've asked all the other boosters to contribute, or they volunteered to contribute, and I think we should have a plan of how we spend our money. And so that's, that's where I am.
So sorry, so for, a little more background, especially for some of us new members. So the fund this comes out of is, are funds that were set aside X number of years ago for, for items such as, have we, so have we, because I thought Liza said we've never used that fund before, to?
We have, we have not used that fund. We used that fund just to do a small study on the existing softball field.
Okay.
The B field, the ones that the JVs used. But other than that, it was all raised money by the public, you know, raised money from, you know, donors. And it, there was a combination, and when we did that project, so much funding from the town, and then so much from the donations, okay? And by the time we value-added everything, there was this money left over. And then donations continue to come in, and when they did, they would, they would go into that fund.
But what was the purpose of the fund?
It was the high school, Hingham High School field projects.
It was a public-
It was intended, it was built to-
Public-private partnership.
For enhancements-
Understood, no.
For the school committee to do enhancements to the field as they saw fit.
And also, some contributions were, were committed, they were pledges over time, so that we didn't even have the cash on hand, because the pledges, so now we have the money, right?
People pledged and then paid as many as, two years later, three years later? That's why there's a balance, because the money came in after-
I did something more longer than three.
Couple of years.
I'd have to go back to the notes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, how much is in this fund?
$148,000.
Okay.
Still have $1.30 left.
So these are funds raised out in the community, so not from taxpayer dollars-
No.
That, private funds that came in for the school, and then they-
Intended, intended for the use of the field.
Intended for the use of the fields, and the-
It's nice to have a buffer.
All right, and the school committee had the discretion of being the ones who got to decide-
That's great.
When and when, where and when that money was spent. Okay.
It was a particular, it was a special account that we set up at that time of the field, and, you know, with that, that definition, you know, for enhancements to the field.
Does the athletic director have an opinion on this, as far as whether it's a good use of this money, and as far as what the plan would be going forward? Because I-
He does indeed. I sat down with, with the Coach Green, that's the girls' varsity softball coach, and I met both Coach Green and Coach Q, our athletic director. Both were on board with the idea, on board with the location, and, and I can say unequivocally, they were both very enthusiastic about this.
But I guess the bigger, so to Liza's point about, you know, we don't want things just popping up, you know, oh, now we want, you know, a batting cage or whatever, is there some sort of plan, long-term, as to how to use this money and what, and basically for the facilities? Because it seems like, you know, this booster's raising money for this sport and this one for that, and, I mean, we, there is an issue of equity. So is there, is there a plan?
I don't think that-
Well, no.
So I think, I know, so I think-
It's a reserve set up for-
Right.
Just so people know, I've heard the term batting cage going twice. There are two batting cages there already, so there won't be any more batting cages. There's one in varsity baseball, and there's one between the freshman baseball and the varsity softball. So the batting cages are signed, sealed, and delivered.
But on the batting cages, that was raised by the boosters, correct?
I don't know that.
I want to understand.
We didn't fund it. I didn't, you know, I didn't fund it.
But the, but the sign wasn't. The signs were given by-
The town.
The town.
Yeah.
And that's where I think about the equity. I think about, and I understand the change in the field. They wanted to go across the street because it's a better field. So I think the equity is that they should have the same sign that we've given to the baseball team.
Mm-hmm.
And the football team and the other varsity sports, right?
Yeah.
And I'm very comfortable about, you know, taking the money from where the fund is because at the end, it is the money raised for this type of purpose. So if you're going back to the community who asks for additional money, why, why we already have money set aside, it just doesn't make any sense.
Right. I think Liza's point is, but how, why this particular sport when other sports haven't come to us for, to use this, this money? So why all of a sudden are we-
The varsity.
Yes, no, no.
I think the realization was some parents of varsity girls softball who did well were at the game at the varsity field, which is, if you haven't seen it, it's a lovely, it's a, it's beautifully built out, and realized, hey, this is our varsity team. There's no scoreboard here. And rather than consider it to be a spontaneous, well, we need this, it was an oversight, to be perfectly honest about it, where's the scoreboard? Wow, there is no scoreboard.
Well, no, we talked about it, but at the time, it needed the solar, and that was too expensive to be able to do that, from what I remember.
That-
So, I mean-
Margaret got an, I got an, as you all know, Margaret got a quote, and why it, why it wasn't followed through, I, I can't, I don't know. Do you know, John?
Like I said, it came up a couple of years ago, but it never got any traction.
Out of sight, out of mind.
Right.
Had I been asked to work on it, I would have, and I wasn't, so I didn't.
Right. So, I mean, I think there are two issues here. One is this very particular issue about this, and I'm sort of, understand the committees, the subcommittees' recommendation of if our, if all of our varsity sports have a scoreboard, then for the girls varsity softball team not to have a scoreboard, regardless of the reason, whether because they moved fields or they didn't move fields, does seem like that is not equitable. But I think the second point of it is, I think there's a larger discussion that this committee has to have, along with our administration and our schools, about how are we funding these things, right? How are we being equitable? Why does the drama club have to, why do those parents have to pay to upgrade the sound system, right? Why does the baseball boosters have to pay for this, and then this? So I think that is a way bigger conversation that we have to have as a, not only as a committee, but as a community as well, right? How, where is it appropriate for those funds to come from? The taxpayers, the individuals, and how are we going to, to do those? So I think there are sort of two issues here that we need to tackle. One of them we can definitely tackle tonight, the other one I'm going to save for another, another meeting. But that's just what I'm thinking.
I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the business manager to proceed with applying for the permit to install the solid-powered scoreboard at the girls, the varsity girls softball field, and to spend the amount of, John, is this number correct?
This is what it is.
Seventeen, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
I'll check on that.
All right. Further discussion? All right, see none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is it? Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. So we are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we will, that is, I think, one thing that we're going to add to our planning meeting to discuss these.
Absolutely.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. All right, on to new business. Seven point one to receive the proposed school committee special reports calendar for 2019-20. So we have established our meeting schedule for the year, and now we are, this is just for everyone to review for, when, when special reports will be delivered to the school committee. I don't think we have to approve those.
Just receiving, no.
We're just receiving the report. So, everybody good?
I have a question.
Yes?
December eighteenth is a Wednesday, and doesn't coincide with the school committee meeting, unless I made a mistake. Oh, it should be the sixteenth, yes.
Sixteenth, is that a typo, maybe?
Must be a typo.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Typo, okay.
Okay.
So we-
December sixteenth.
December sixteenth, okay, so we'll make that change.
Good catch.
Heather Rodriguez is listening. If Heather Rodriguez is listening, we will be on December. All right, so we'll have Pam, and then update this. Any other dates? All right. Thank you for catching that, Libby.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item seven point two, to receive the fall 2019 high school coaching recommendations. Those are also in your packet. Ones in red are new additions to the coaching staff, the ones with an asterisk, I think our coach has worked for the department. Red asterisk, they've worked for the department, but this is a new assignment for, okay. Any questions come from this?
I wanted to ask Dr. Austin, if you had an opportunity to have any meetings with the coaches of all of the different sports?
I have not yet. That is on my agenda. Absolutely want to do that, but not yet.
So just, you know, I think that would be very important that, you know, as I keep saying, you know, the extra curriculum activities, you know, it applies to the academics. So I'd love to see how the coach has been mentored by somebody like yourself, and to make sure that they are actually trying to be as positive as they can, and try to be more encouraging and motivating the kids. We shouldn't be playing the sports just to win, we should be giving a chance to those individuals that were selected to be part of the team to play. We hear a lot of complaints that the individuals have been selected to play, and they are not given opportunities, so, you know, if you could help us in making sure that the coaches understand that, that would be great.
I will say that I have met a large majority of the coaches and the staffs, which I, but I have not gone into that detail. Absolutely.
Any questions, thoughts, comments on the coaching recommendations? Sorry, I forget if we need to act on this, or is this, are there the recommendations and then-
I don't need to act on it, just to-
It's our, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Seven point three, to review plans for the September twenty-second, 2019 school committee planning meeting. That is in a couple of Sundays from now, starting at eight-
Eight to eleven.
Eight to eleven, yes.
Eight to eleven, okay.
Not eleven oh one, eleven AM, eight to eleven. Say it every time, but this time it's going to happen. So, anyway, so we need to, we need to start planning that. So it's a very small window of time that we have to, to discuss our plans for the school year. One thing that I was thinking about, and it's Dr. Austin's first one, John and Jamie are old hands at this fun weekend meeting that we have, and Dr. Viness was here, I think last, you attended last year. If people are in agreement, one thing that I think I would like to have at this meeting, and not to take up a lot of times, but I would love if the chairs of the subcommittees could, ahead of time, maybe come up with like a two or three-sentence sort of vision, mission statement for their committee for the year. I think that would be sort of helpful, so people understand what sort of their goals, I shouldn't say vision, sort of what your top three goals are for the year in your particular subcommittees, if that makes sense. But other than that, I didn't have any, I'm open to suggestions for what folks would feel is important to bring up. I'm feeling fees might be one of those topics of conversation, but how about administration? What do you, what, what would you like to get out of this meeting, that particular day?
I'm going to defer to it a minute, because we really haven't talked much about the, and so I looked at you guys and say, in the past, what's our focus been and-
We could also keep this very broad for tonight's purposes, and sort of say, if we have three hours-
I'd like to know what your budget priorities are for the 2021 budget, because that's, that's a very important meeting for me.
Okay.
That school committee planning meeting that we have in September, where you folks said, here's where we want to go, and here's what our priorities are likely to be for 2021, because in October I'm going to start building the 2021 budget.
Okay.
Okay, and then we won't really have more opportunity to sort of go through that. So that's always, it's always really important to me that we, you know, we discuss that, and then, you know, we discuss the, what we might do with full day K or the offsets, or a lot of, a lot of items relative to what the budget impact of whatever you decide at that meeting would be. You know, the financial impact, that's what I'm also looking at.
Okay. All right.
Maybe we could talk about equity. I mean, we just had the whole presentation about it, and what we should be, what we should all be doing to kind of move that forward. And I was also thinking about it too, and just, we can talk about it more later, but just also how, you know, it's, it's a community effort, it's not just the schools, it can't be. So like, how do we pull in the community too? So.
Okay. All right.
Michelle, I was going to, not only what role do you want us to play in the equity, as Carrie said, but on the other initiatives, the technology, the website, what do you want us to play a role in that? And then how does that translate to the budget? I think we should have a conversation about outside funding, whether it's fundraising, fees, kindergarten tuition, I mean, all those things. You know, what fees have we been charging? How often should we raise them? And we keep kicking the can down on the athletic fee in the high school. Haven't raised that in six years now, I think it's going on. But then, you know, we have all these outside groups who are raising money. Do we want, how do we want to marry all of this-
Right.
-together? What are all the things we want in our district? And do we, should we be paying for them flat out? Or do we charge, you know, and, or do we just establish a process of talking about this issue?
Right.
So, but I think we should begin that process because, you know, even with the budget, and I think we should put foster school on that too, and Plymouth River, of what are all the ways we're going to the community asking for money? I think it'd be good for us to get our hands around even getting the list down.
Right, I know, exactly. Yes, I know. All right, that's great, yeah.
I think the idea of each of the subcommittees coming up with their top three concerns or issues is a, is a real good idea, but I'm hoping that we'll have time for an individual who may not be on a specific subcommittee-
Yes.
-to have an issue that would fall into somebody else's turf-
Yep.
-rather than just be locked into-
Yes.
You know.
I'm with you. I understand what you're saying, yes.
So I don't, there's not a lot of time there, and it's easy to-
I know. And I think maybe-
We have some time for individuals that, okay.
And Michelle, to Dr. Schreier's point, we don't have much time before the twenty-second, and I don't think we'll be able to have a meeting to seek the input of each other, and we would not be able to communicate via email. So since we are here together, or perhaps we can think about it and then discuss on the day of the meeting, but I don't know how we can discuss this without having a meeting, you know what I mean? The three of us on the subcommittee? Or your subcommittee, Schreier, I mean, how are you going to-
We're meeting tomorrow, so.
Or your meeting tomorrow, good for you.
Which is fine. I mean, it's-
Well, how about, you just asked the chairman of the various subcommittees, who obviously-
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
Know pretty much what's, what's going on to this point-
Right.
-to give their top three priorities, and then, and then maybe let the other members kick in.
Right.
How's that sound?
Yeah, that could work. That could, I think this, also the subcommittee goals could probably also just naturally tie into budget priorities and equity and fees as well, so I think we can-
With more of the program that you can have down in paper, how better it's going to be.
No, absolutely. No, those are really great suggestions for topics, and, I mean, it's a lot, we have three hours, but I think if people are inclined, that Dr. Austin and I can work together to set up a format and get a timeframe, and, you know, sort of allocate a specific amount of time. So I'm thinking budget priorities, two hours and fifty-nine minutes, and then, and they'll have one minute to do the rest of it. But no, we'll figure out how to sort of break it up into time so that we can get a lot accomplished that day. Okay. All right. Terrific. Thank you. So we'll be in touch. All right, so, seven point four. Thank you. To declare as surplus approximately two hundred biology textbooks, sixty-eight chemistry textbooks, twenty-five VCRs at HHS, twenty-one VCRs at foster school, and various obsolete audiovisual equipment at Hingham High School, and to dispose of them at the least cost to taxpayers. John?
This must be a Hingham activity this week. Now, you've got two hundred biology textbooks. I'd like to give you three, and you've got sixty-eight chemistry textbooks. I'd like to add in two. Joyce has been going. I'm not making that up.
Over the summer, the directors, they start cleaning house, and Katie Roberts identified these integrated texts for science. And I says, okay, well, let me know what they are, and, you know, I took them over the summer, and, and then also, Dan identified the various audiovisual equipment, so, you know, and they're, they're on a list. So, and we all know about the VCRs, the VCRs, but the insurance company requested that we removed them, we did remove them, so now we want to just dispose of them, and, you know, since they were purchased through taxpayer money, we should, you know, ask for a declaration of surplus by the school committee, so that we can probably dispose of them. I know the, there's just this week, a couple of other items have popped up, which I'll give you maybe next week, but I think sailboats, they're looking at declaring a few other sailboat surplus, because they're going to replace them with some other new ones. They did that a couple of years ago, and I think they still have some money in a gift account, which they'll subsidize with, I think it's a sale in boosters. I mean, all that, all that was purchased with gift money anyhow. And then I heard from Megan Millanson today about some phys ed bikes that probably will be declared surplus, but that's not today, that's just, you know, forewarned for the next, next, next meeting. But for this one here, there's three, there's the VCRs, the biology, the books, and the audiovisual equipment. None of it has any value, the books are too old, the audiovisual equipment, I mean, we probably all have that stuff lying around our house too. It's better to get it declared surplus before you throw it away instead of just throwing it away, so. I don't want to, I want to make sure that when people say, hey, I got this stuff, can I just throw it away, that I tell them, no, you can't throw it away, and you have to go through a process for it. It's good control to the field.
All right.
That's it?
That's it.
So there's, I might put some words down if you want to take those notes.
So, John, do I have to mention each item at a time and vote on?
I think some of the language that I put on this sheet, Carlos probably would, would cover it all.
Okay, let's follow that then. All right, I'd like to make a motion to declare surplus of approximately two hundred biology textbooks, and direct the director of business and support service to dispose of them at the least cost to the Hingham taxpayers.
All that discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to declare surplus of approximately sixty-eight chemistry textbooks, and direct the director of business and support service to dispose of them- and direct the director of business and support service to dispose of them for, at least cost to the Hingham taxpayers.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to declare surplus of 25 VCRs at the Hingham High School and 21 VCR at Foster School and direct the business, the director of business and support service to dispose of them at the least cost to the Hingham taxpayers.
Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to declare surplus of various audio/video equipment as detailed on the enclosed list and direct the director of business and support service to dispose of this equipment at the least cost to the Hingham taxpayers.
Questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, then in your packets, items seven point five, seven point six, seven point seven are three homeschool applications for consideration. So that information is all in your packets. So, no, yes, does someone want to, do you want to make a motion?
Just a second. I'd like to make a motion...
And if you can, sorry, let's do them all...
At once?
Yes, all at once.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the homeschooling application of Emmett Dorn, grade two, for the 2019-2020 school year, Cosette Yuktun, grade 10, for the 2019-2020 school year, and Annalise Ling, grade two, for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Thank you, Liza. Any discussion?
In years past, we've had some observations from the superintendent. Have we, have we received programs from these parents and, and they have your blessing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Carlos. I think our principals already went through all the people that have been hired and moved around from the various schools, so we're just going to say, seven point eight, seven point nine, seven point 10, seven point 11, seven point 12. We have numerous appointments, new additions to staff, advancements on the salary scale, leaves of absence, and a few resignations, so welcome to our newest members of the Hingham Public School family, and thank you to our, to those who are resigning. We appreciate all you've done for our schools. Item number eight, other items as may not reasonably known, 48 hours in advance. Does anyone have any 48-hour items? No, terrific. Item number nine, subcommittee and project reports. I will start with Lutness, if you have anything.
I have East School, the school council meetings are going to be happening late September, early October. They're having a PTO meeting this week, and a back-to-school bash on 9/20, which is the carnival, games, inflatables. Looking forward to attending that.
Very good.
Yeah. And then, community outreach, we have a meeting September 17th. And we have, I have the Metgo liaison. Carols had reached out to Michelle and I to set up a meeting to discuss the program there, so we will report back on that.
Yes, I, I copy, yep, all right, so we'll set up some time to meet. So it's a new position, so we're going to meet to discuss what our vision is for this liaison role. All right, Libby.
Just to report that community outreach will meet again on September 17th at 8:30 AM, and the first HEF meeting will be on the same day, September 17th, at 7:15 PM.
Thank you. Liza?
Salary negotiations are already reported, but we will need to schedule a meeting in the, in near future to get together.
Yes. Ed?
We were contacted by, by three booster parents about the concession stand. I put together a, a meeting with two members, two members of the Hingham Sports Partnership, three or four booster parents, John attended and I did as well, at this point, two Fridays ago. And I'll just say that it needed some field day. Put together an organization with, spent a lot of time this past week, you know, trying to really get to the bottom of the organization, and I'll, hopefully we'll have a real report as to how the whole thing will be organized going forward. Was back on Saturday with a field day with several parents. We went back and took the trash out, and I'm very happy to report that it's, that it's clean as a whistle. And although I didn't go Sunday, it was used Sunday by the football boosters, saw some pictures, and they had a great day.
Okay.
Yeah.
We did not get to finish our conversation about that, but I do have a suggestion that I will throw in your, we'll do it offline, as a former person who used to use that concession stand for various fundraising activities, but I'll call you about it. Carrie?
Policy is meeting tomorrow at 1:15.
All right, thank you.
I think long-range planning said enough, but I do want to say that our three items that we think is a huge priority that we already have said is foster, it is the windows at Plymouth River, and is the master plan that we will address all the items, couple improvement that we need to address in the next 10 years.
Okay, great.
Just want to make sure, put it out there.
Exactly, let's take that off the list.
I don't have to come anymore, I don't have to come? I'm upset.
He's not to come. All right, awesome, thank you. Special ed subcommittee, I sent an email earlier to Dr. Austin and Dr. Venice, so I think if you would like to join us, that would be great, but also Dr. Venice and I were just going to sit down and sort of just go over what, what's the best way that we think that the subcommittee can help the special ed department reach their goals, and then talk about just logistics, about what, you know, what, how often should we meet, what times are best, you know, daytime meetings or the evening meetings, how, you know, how we work with CPAC. So if my fellow subcommittee members don't mind, Dr. Venice and I will sit down, and then the three of us will have a meeting very, very soon.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. And that's all I have for subcommittee and project reports, unless anyone else. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn if someone would be so kind.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Well, second.
Thank you, Libby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.